May 12th, Tuolton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance tonight led by Council Hillier.
Good evening. Please stand, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to announcements. And our first announcement is a proclamation declaring May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Tuolton. We have representatives from NAMI here, so Felicity Tony and Dave Hunt. Good to see you, Dave.
Thank you.
So we'll have a presentation from NAMI and then Council Hillier will read the proclamation.
Great. Mayor, councilors, thanks for the opportunity to be here. As he said, I'm Dave Hunt. I'm the local executive director of NAMI. And you'll notice one of your flyers is actually from NAMI Clackamas and one from NAMI Washington County. So you've got, since your city is a little bit of both, we gave you a little bit of both. As the mayor said, this is Mental Health Awareness Month. I think many of you are aware, and I watched your proclamation last month, which kind of sits nicely alongside Mental Health Awareness Month, because it is true that one in five residents of your city and of our country have some kind of a mental health condition. And as much as we like to focus on that, it's also important to think about those other four, because they are family members and work colleagues and neighbors and go to the same faith community. They are also impacted by mental health. So all of the services that NAMI provides are focused on both the peers themselves as well as the family members. I'm not going to go over all these stats, but the two I would point out is if you look at the suicide deaths in the country, 14.7 per 100,000 Americans is a big number. But the Oregon number and the Clackamas County and the Washington County numbers are bigger than that, 18.6 per 100,000. So we have a serious suicide epidemic in our community and in our country. And I will say that 18.6 is moving down. So if there's one positive takeaway, the last few years, that number is slowly moving down. I'm not going to go over all these, but there is no one side when you're thinking about mental health. There is no one sign of a mental health condition. There's no one sign of someone considering suicide. It could be a whole variety of things. So we really encourage folks to think about, are you seeing a change in behavior? Are you seeing a worsening, a depth of that behavior change? Is the duration of a particular behavior changing? Because there is no one sign to watch for. But when you see a change in behavior, especially those within your circle of influence, get outside your comfort zone and act. This slide kind of walks through several different things that can be done to intervene. But more than anything, it just requires action. That last line there, encourage partner and support, asking tough questions. And it is so much outside of all of our comfort zones to ask someone, have you thought about hurting yourself? Have you considered suicide? That's a really difficult question, but that also can be a life-changing, a life-saving question if we're willing to get outside of our comfort zones and ask it. For those of you, probably all the councilors, but still probably only, I find about 40% of the public is aware of 988. It's only stood up three years ago. The calls coming into 988 are continue to rise month over month. It is the mental health crisis line. And when you call there, you don't get law enforcement dispatched. You get a mental health professional on the other end of the line. If they need to dispatch someone, they're typically going to dispatch a mobile crisis response team, non-uniformed mental health professionals unarmed. Only one-half of 1% of the calls to 988 end up resulting in a dispatch law enforcement. And that's just where there's a mention of a gun or a knife, or there should be some dispatch law enforcement. But 988 is saving a lot of lives. And I think the more we can encourage people to call 988, both for ourselves, if we're feeling in crisis, or for a loved one, or you may walk outside of the city building and see someone on the street. You can call 988 for that, too. So definitely, we want to encourage people to do as much of that as possible. NAMI Clackamas and NAMI Washington County have very similar, almost nearly identical missions. We're focused on education, support, and advocacy, and we've been doing it since 1978. NAMI actually was stood up in Oregon before the National was even formed. It was called something different then. But it was a group of parents of adult kids with mental health conditions who brought together an organization to provide that education, support, and advocacy for their adult kids. And that mission remains very much the same. And that plays out in a variety of ways. It plays out through things like our peer-to-peer classes, which again are focused on those with the mental health condition, our family-to-family classes, which are focused on their family members. We have a whole bunch of support groups. Some are very much general, come one, come all. Some are online, some are in person. We have a weekly Latinx support group. We have just stood up a book club. The support group meets online, the book club meets in person. We now have a women's support group. We have a queer-specific support group that's actually having their first meeting online tonight. We have now a peer support group in the Clackamas County jail that meets every, actually also tonight, Monday nights. So lots of peer support groups, several family support groups, lots of opportunities for people to connect with those who are experiencing very similar things to what they're experiencing. We also do lots of presentations, and I would call your attention to this flyer that I think you have in front of you, which is Parenting and Mental Health Conference, which is going to be at the Tuolton Public Library this coming Sunday. This coming Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., Parenting and Mental Health Conference. This one is specifically focused at parents of school-aged kids. Lots of other programming for people in other stages of life, but parents of school-aged kids, that is a tough job. I'm so happy my kids are now in their 20s, because being a parent of school-aged kids today is brutal. And this will provide support from professionals, from other parents, from youth coming to share. It's completely free, but you'll see registration is required. So I'd encourage folks to take advantage of that Parenting and Mental Health Conference. And for folks who may be viewing this online, you can go to the website washconnami.org/parentmh, as in parent mental health. So again, that's Sunday, May 18th at 1:00 p.m. Lots of other presentations that any civic clubs, any faith communities, any neighborhood associations, we're happy to come out. We often say, where five or more are gathered, we'll make a presentation. My pastor does not like that, because it's not very biblical. It should be two or more gathered, he tells me. But where five or more are gathered, we're happy to come out and talk about mental health. We also have three peer support specialists on staff, and NAMI Washington County has another set of peer support specialists on staff available to meet one-on-one with people who may be struggling with a mental health issue. We also started last year doing three-day-week classes in the county jail in addition to our support group in the jail. There's huge intersection between mental health and the criminal justice system. And we're trying to get earlier in the process to give people tools and resources to be able to handle that. Everything we do, everything NAMI Washington County does is 100% free. No insurance, no diagnosis, no barrier to access. And that's a terrible revenue model, but it's a great model in terms of access for people who need it. All that happens because of our volunteers and because of our donors that support events like these on your screen. But again, the mission that started with a group of parents in 1978 has grown exponentially, but that focus on education, support, and advocacy remains exactly the same. We appreciate your shining a spotlight during Mental Health Awareness Month on this topic, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thanks, Dave. Questions for Dave? Council Brooks.
I want to say thank you. I first worked with people in NAMI when I was in Michigan. I've been a clinician for a very long time with mental health issues. I wanted just to also stand up the fact that it is an advocacy group, and there is a lot of really good information that NAMI can help people that are looking for, having questions about different systems. Do you mind sharing a little bit about?
Yeah, it's a great question, and we really do try and be a connector. And we look at advocacy in two different ways. One, we do legislative advocacy. So like, two sessions ago, we advocated for the bill that successfully fully funded 988. This year, we're focused on changing the state's civil commitment laws to make it a little bit more accessible to use that process, as well as some housing and mobile crisis response funding. So we do legislative advocacy, but also connecting people with resources, because we don't pretend that we provide all the resources. So in some ways, sometimes it's connecting people with the clinician, maybe connecting people with a support group that is kind of a very specific kind of support group that we don't offer. Sometimes it's arguing with their insurance company, or arguing with, which sometimes is OHP. And so, yeah, we do a lot of advocacy.
Yeah, and I've even seen it with legal and with hospital systems. So, and just information about that, which is really helpful for our family members as well. So I just want to thank you for the excellent work and also add to the thing with the behavioral change, that it's not always those sad ones. There can be somebody that's been chronically depressed that often isn't in a really good mood, and that can be a big warning sign. That just happened to a friend of mine that lost their sibling. So that happens more often than you'd think.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Council Hillier.
I thought I'd save my questions till this minute. I did want to point out, as part of that great work with 988, it's really important for people to realize you can also text 988. It isn't just a phone call. And I know that our youth use that. That's kind of a big, important part of what they look for.
And you can also, yeah, you can call or text in English or Spanish.
Yeah, in English or Spanish. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. And that also, when people are asking questions, one of the things that we talk about a lot in QPR, Question, Persuade, Refer Suicide Prevention Courses, is that, because we have people practice saying, are you thinking of self-harm? But it's also okay to say, do you have a plan? And making sure that you talk about those sorts of things. So I just wanted to be sure people understood that as well. And also put in a shameless plug for the event that was talked about two weeks ago, that NAMI of Clackamas County is partnering with Leap Youth Alliance on Wednesday night at Tuolton High School. It's a youth mental health town hall, really focused on parents. And similar to this, but it'll be in-your-own-voice presentation that you saw shared. And so that'll be really impactful. So, thank you. City of Tuolton Proclamation. Whereas, mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental illness is prevalent in our country, state, and nation, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. And whereas stigma and the resulting discrimination is a priority obstacle, primary, excuse me, obstacle to early identification and effective treatment of individuals with mental illness and their ability to recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas approximately half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death of individuals aged 10 to 14 and 25 to 34. And whereas long delays averaging 11 years occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help, and it is therefore essential to cure the stigma and discrimination that is a primary cause for those delays. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping cure the stigma and discrimination that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting health. And whereas public education and civic engagement improves the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that Tuolton recognizes May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Tuolton to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health, to promote identification and timely treatment of mental illness, and to cure the resulting stigma and discrimination. Introduced and adopted this 12th day of May 2025, City of Tuolton, Oregon.
Dave, would you like a copy of the proclamation?
That'd be great.
That brings us to item number two on announcements, a new employee introduction. Jackson Porterfield. Welcome, Nick.
Mayor, council, good evening. Good to see you all. Nick Westendorf, I'm your Deputy Public Works Director. And I'm here this evening to introduce our new team member, Jackson Porterfield. Jackson joined the Public Works Department on April 28th as a Management Analyst II. He has a degree in Geography and Data Science from UW, and recently was at the city of Ordin, Washington, in their Public Works Department, working on GIS, which is their map-based software for assets, and asset management, supporting their program and the procurement of a new asset management software. So, super excited for the skills he brings. Having some in-house GIS support is going to be awesome and some expertise there, as well as somebody who understands asset management and can help us develop our program. So we're very excited to have him. He's going to become the administrator of our software suites that we use to manage our assets. He's going to help us coordinate with GIS and engineering and hopefully build out our program. So with that, thank you for helping me welcome him and turn it over to you.
Welcome, Jackson. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. I didn't realize I was going to have the floor to speak. It's been a great, I'm just still getting my feet kind of wet. I've only been here for about two weeks. But just getting to know people so far, it's been, everyone's had great things to say about working here, about public work specifically in the operations. I know we've got some great minds at the helm, and we're headed in good direction. So yeah, I'm ready, excited to get to work.
I just want to welcome you, and hopefully you have a long career here. And one day you'll take over Public Works here, you know, you never know.
Succession behind you.
Well, you know, not in the next five, 10 years, but eventually. Obviously, he's on the younger side, so he's got some time. But you, because basically you've got to fill every position in Public Works, so, to get there. But yeah, thank you for coming and joining us. I look forward to, you know, working with you. Perfect Public Works staff. You know, we're doing some innovative stuff, like with the inflow pipes and stuff like that. So I think you're going to get to see a lot of things that you wouldn't expect to see in a city our size.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address a council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the meeting room who would like to address the council, I'll take those first. If we have none, we'll move on to Zoom. Do we have anyone in the room? You didn't have, you don't have to be signed up. Anyone would like to address the council tonight? Seeing none, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Not one person.
Not one person. All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items considered routine will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed or heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda consists of only one item tonight. Consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of April 28th, 2025. Would any councilor like this item removed from the agenda and heard separately later tonight? Seeing none?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on those motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right. That brings us to special reports. We have an outside agency grant awardee, the Mitch Charter Schools here in force, to give their update on the award we gave them. And Krista, who's coming up? I think Caitlin should come up, too.
I do, too. Susan wants to come.
Come on.
Susan and I are co-chairing the Nutrition Services Committee.
Someone's getting a stink eye. Caitlin's getting a stink eye.
Caitlin White, the Executive Director of Mitch Charter School. Susan and I are on the Mitch Board of Directors. Sarah Parker is our Board President, and Shannon Fairley is our PSO President. So thank you for having us tonight. My name is Krista. I'm a parent at Mitch, and I've served on the board this year. In September of 2023, our board created a special project, School Lunch Committee. Committee members work diligently to investigate the feasibility and logistics of offering school lunch options at Mitch. The school is located in an industrial park, if you haven't been there before, and lacks a full kitchen, which prevents the ability to prepare food on campus for students. Offering students access to proper nutrition is a fundamental necessity that lays the foundation for a quality education. By establishing a sustainable school lunch program, we could address this basic need and contribute to the holistic development and well-being of our students and community. So this is a subset of the presentation we gave to our charter holder, TTSD, at the beginning of the year, because that's something that they have asked the last five years of us, that we offer a school lunch program, because that was lacking in our holistic offering, I guess, to our students. Our committee was able to give a tour to TTSD Nutrition Services Team in September of 2024 through contacts made by Sarah Parker, our Mitch Board Chair, and our Vice Principal Nicole Hans. The team worked quickly to determine the feasibility of offering breakfast and lunch via the CEP program at Mitch, which is similar to what TTSD offers. On November 13th, 2024, we were able to provide meals to Mitch students. So, yeah, two months into the school year, we were able to unexpectedly offer kids breakfast and lunch every day. Most of TTSD uses, about 40% of their populations use these programs. At Mitch, we're finding, on the worst day, 67%. On our best day, 85% of the school is utilizing this. So not only was it something that was asked of us, but there was absolutely a need. We're feeding about 175 of our 220-ish kiddos every day. We have a share bin that if kiddos don't want their fruit or vegetable, they can leave it, and a kid can take that as a snack that's being utilized and pretty much empty most days. And students, we're getting them to try new things. Hummus was a word some didn't know, but it was an option to try with bell peppers one day. So they're being exposed to things that they may not be outside of school as well. We were able to hire a lunch assistant, who is also a Mitch parent, working four hours a day. She goes to Tuolton High School to pick up our meals in the big warmers and serves our lunches to our students, as well as preps breakfast for the next day for another staff member to offer to students in the morning. So then, your funding that you offered us at the beginning of the, at the beginning of our school year, which came in right when we needed it unexpectedly, that we were going to be able to offer something so quickly. TTSD was able to offer us most of the infrastructure around, like they brought us a milk cooler, as well as like the serving bar, I'll call it. But your funding helped us utilize for said milk fridge. We needed to have outlets installed. We needed to get carts to transport all of these heavy coolers for our lunch attendant, as well as her salary was not anticipated, because we weren't expecting to be able to implement something so quickly. So funding from you all, plus our PSO, we were able to do this wonderful thing. And it was a great day, and it's something that, like, everyone is so proud of. If you want to see the feedback from our community, these were some of the, yeah, quotes that they offered. "The breakfast and lunch program has changed my life. Thank you. We are so thankful for the lunch program. It has made our mornings run so much smoother. And the kids are always excited to tell me what food day it was. The mornings have gotten so much easier. Thank you, lunch committee. You all worked so hard on this, and this is such an exciting addition to our Mitch families." Ms. Bled can attest to our behavioral regulation or improvement, but it was very much a team effort. We got input from TTSD Nutrition Services, Craig Hill, Abby Budd, Chad Carver, Cindy Hyatt Henry, Haley Day, and Kim Loom, from Mitch, Ms. Bled, Ms. Hans, Elaine Hill, our PE teacher, Kathy, our lunch attendant, and Sarah Parker. And then our Nutrition Services Committee was Susan and myself, Shannon, Vicky Guile, and Alex Lalié. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions for Mitch? Council Brooks.
I just want to thank you so much for the report. And it's interesting, when I was going to, I went to school at Wayne State University for social work, and one of my favorite professors started the National Lunch Breakfast Program and designed that program. And part of what we really learned a lot about was how kids function, how kids can't really function if they're hungry, how kids lose stuff if they're hungry. And there was a lot of blaming towards some kids that were hungry for not being able to keep it together. But the reality is, they were just hungry. So I'm sure that it's a time saver for the parents, but I'm sure it's a really big deal for the kids. And it's so wonderful to hear this is how our money was.
Oh, yes.
The contribution was used. It feels, it just, and if you would have known Professor Donar, you'd be twice as happy, too, about that. So thank you.
It was funny, the first day that we did it, these kiddos, it was raining. And so they had indoor recess, and they made these little signs and kind of paraded in. And it was just like a lovely celebration at our sweet little school.
Well, and I'd say, in addition, just in it being Mental Health Month, when we talk about Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, right? I mean, making sure our kids are well-rested and fed is number one. And we've already seen huge strides in our behavioral management and support that we've been able to offer, but also that the kids have been able to engage in. And we've also seen with enrollment for next year, that our school is now more accessible for our Title I families. So we're seeing the Mitch community change in large part to this nutrition program. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks for that information. It's great. Thank you.
I don't know if you all knew, know that I'm on the,
Move the microphone closer, please.
I should know better. Come here now. I just want to say, I met Caitlin and Sarah at a chamber event last spring and asked for a tour of Mitch. I knew Mitch was here, but I didn't know much about it. And I got this fabulous tour, and as, when I found out they had no lunch program and no kitchen, I said, you need a kitchen. And we talked about it and brought the lunch program up and back and went through a process of trying to find the right avenue to take to have a lunch program, whether it was a food cart out in the parking lot, or food delivered in by a restaurant in town, whatever it took. And we investigated all kinds of ideas. And then found out we could go to, they could go to the school district, which funds part of the school, and they worked really well together. I got to step back. I was all about going out and fundraising and, you know, finding the right people to furnish a kitchen. I said, I'll find a restaurant that has extra restaurant things, and we'll bring them in, and we'll put a kitchen together. And I want to tell you, well, I love Mitch. I'm very proud to be on their board. I think it's a jewel in our community, what we have, they have to offer to our kiddos. But this group, Sarah and Shannon and Kristen and Caitlin and her staff and the other people on our committee, it's a powerhouse. I do not discount anything that they did. I got to sit back and watch, which is not my style, but as you know. But I did, and it was a pleasure. And I'm just so proud of what they did. And when the city came through and put them on your schedule for funding and recognized who they are and what they do, I thought that, it was just, it was the icing on the cake. And I want to thank you, too, because I think you all have helped promote a program that is going to be so beneficial and so helpful to this school. And like I said, there, these ladies that, and there are some men on the committees, too, honestly, but they really are a powerhouse, and they work really hard for this school and do a fabulous job. And it was my pleasure all year to be a part of that and to see that go. So I want to extend my thanks to the city, too, because she did a great thing.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other comments? Well, thank you all for coming tonight. As was mentioned, you guys are doing a fantastic job. I just happened to be there reading like the day we did the Caitlin Strong Army and Dido in a video.
It was really tough to get you.
The day before the launch, but yeah, you could see the excitement. I'm glad it's working out well, and I got to thank you for all your efforts.
It's going very well. Thank you very much.
You're all volunteers putting this together, so we very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. That brings us to general business. We have one item on general business. It's the Climate Action Implementation Funding Presentation. Tag team, I believe, is Tag team, I believe, is your Sherilyn and Dawn DeSherilyn.
It's just Sherilyn.
Dawn shot out of here. He said, "I'm done."
I made him go home.
Yeah, that's good.
Although I, I do have slides that just say Dawn. So I don't know what we're going to do with that. Thank you, Mayor Bubinik and councilors. I'm excited to be before you again to talk about this, talk about the important work of the Climate Action Plan and moving it forward in a meaningful way. As the mayor said, I'm Sherilyn Lambos, City Manager here. And the, the aberration before you is not Dawn. So, I guess I'm up for this. So as a reminder, or a recap, the Climate Action Plan you adopted last May is made up of four sections, seven focus areas divided into 28 different strategies, each with specific actions under them, for a total of 146 actions. In October, you adopted a short-term work plan that is made up of actions being taken on with existing staff in their existing capacity. Important and needed work, but not resourced appropriately, as we've, as we've talked about, in terms of making strategic headway for the Climate Action Plan. You did include it in your council priorities, and there's a couple of actions. Expand the two-year Climate Action Implementation Plan to a five-year prioritized plan. Identify a funding source to support ongoing Climate Action programmatic efforts and hire a staff person to manage the Climate Action Plan implementation. So that is there. Oh, let's move forward. Since it's been a while since we've talked about the specific plan, I wanted to just talk about how it's broken down. So there's, as I said, there are seven focus areas. Focus areas one to three are adaptation-related. So there's nine strategies and 59 actions that, which are meant to help Tuolton prepare for and adapt to climate change. And then the, the second tier there, section three, focus areas four through seven are mitigation-related. So there are 19 strategies and 87 actions that are meant to help Tuolton reduce community-wide emissions to the net zero goal of, in 2020, 2050. Several of the actions I'll just remind you of that are on the two-year work plan. Action 8.1.8 is to conduct an analysis of options for sustainable funding. And then action 8.1.3 is following that up on that to implement a sustainable funding source for the Climate Action Program, which is meant to hire a staff person to oversee and manage the program. I, I mentioned this before, when Echo Northwest came to talk to you, but the Climate Action Plan that you adopted, in order for it to be successful, we will need a dedicated resource. This position, it is, it is proposed that would, this position would have overall responsibility for implementing the plan and would work closely with various city departments, public leaders, regional partners, and of course, the community. I foresee this position being responsible for implementing programs, coordinating activities, developing long-range plans, and engaging with the public. Responsibilities would also include establishing and implementing metrics to measure and track progress and success. We do not currently have that capacity in our organization, nor the ongoing funding necessary to hire an employee for this. So we, we contracted with Echo Northwest to conduct an analysis of options for ongoing funding sources for this position and program. And they came before you in February, I believe it was, to present their, their findings and analysis. They analyzed a number of options, and working with staff, narrowed them down to ones that were the most viable, and then presented those to you. So their scope focused on analyzing the tools to begin, to begin funding the, the Climate Action Implementation, and then to inform how to fund a, a staff member to, dedicated to the climate actions. After presenting the information on all of these tools, you gave direction to explore three of the most viable ones, and they're underlined here. So right-of-way fees, franchise fees, building permit fees, and a Share the Pennies program, a utility bill roundup. And so we are here tonight with that follow-up. Echo Northwest did provide a report, and that is in your packet. And I'll go over that. And this slide says Dawn. So, so two questions about the right-of-way fees. So how do the city of Tuolton's rates compare? And the, the top chart, and it's also in your packet, shows Tuolton, Milwaukee, and Gresham for electric, so PGE, natural gas, telecommunications, and solid waste. You can see for all of these franchise fees and rates that we are low compared to the cities that Echo Northwest looked at. So another question that you asked was how much revenue could the city raise by increasing the rate? And so we had Echo Northwest look at three different variations. A half a percent increase, a 1% increase, and a 1.5% increase. So it shows there the current rate. So for instance, electric, our PGE rate, franchise fee, is 3.5%. In 2024, that revenue was 1.6 million. And so if you added a half a percent to that, it would generate an additional 249,000, so on and so forth. And we can come back to this if you have more questions. And the building permit fees, a 5% surcharge on building permits and fees. And so this shows the 2025 budget for building for those specific fees, and then with a 5% surcharge. And so that would raise approximately $68,000 if you added a 5% surcharge to the building permit fees. There is a strong correlation between building and climate action work. According to the, the work that was done, the greenhouse gas emission work, approximately 40-some percent of our emissions are from buildings. And so having a nexus to the revenue raised is, is, is a, is a positive thing in my mind. And finally, the Share the Pennies program. So this is, it was, the original Share the Pennies, a utility bill roundup program was in Memphis, Tennessee. And we looked at it, explored it, but our system does not have the capability of rounding up. And so the alternative would be a, like, a, a fee, basically either 49 cents or 99 cents. We looked at both of those. And we talked in February about it being an opt-out program. That's how it is in Memphis. And they have, we had Echo Northwest look at a couple of different participation rates. So 13% opt-out gives you 87% participation rate. And at 49 cents, that raises 64,000. And at 99 cents, it raises 108, 130,000. And then if you were, if we were more conservative and, and looked at a 50% participation rate, so 50% of the, our customers opted out, then it shows there how much that would raise. I love the concept of this program, that it, it's an option. So it's not imposed necessarily. And it gives the customers a, a, a bite at that apple of, of contributing to climate action work. So costs of the program. So as you heard earlier tonight in the Budget Committee meeting, we have included as a recommendation in the proposed budget, a program coordinator position in the, that would be out of the city manager's office. So this assumes that there is an ongoing funding source. So we're going on faith by putting it in the budget that, that there would be an ongoing funding source. But I believe putting it in my office will give the work more visibility, and it will also highlight the interdepartmental connectedness of this work. So to fully fund the program, which includes a position and all the ancillary costs associated with the position, plus some implementation expenses, so like consultants, and maybe some seed money for grants, some matching money. We put $100,000 in that, that, that program expenses, and the rest of it is for the position. But that would be about $250,000 to fully fund, fully fund the program. So with that, I'll turn it back to you for your discussion and direction, but we're looking for direction from you for how to, how to fund the, fund the program ongoing.
Thanks, Sherilyn. Questions for Sherilyn? Councilor Sacco?
Thank you, Sherilyn. So, and looking at the, in the, the franchise fee option, so at a half a percent increase, we happen to know what that would, I mean, I think we're assuming that then those, those companies would pass those, pass that along to consumers, households. And so do we know approximately what that increase would look like to our residents?
I do not know that answer, Councilor Sacco, of, I, I could get that, I could get that and follow up with you.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be interesting, because, I mean, I think this obviously includes like our businesses and whatnot, but I'm particularly interested in the residents.
Other questions? Council Brooks?
Thanks for the presentation. I'm excited to talk about this. I think that, for me, a lot of these make sense for different reasons. So I would go for a mixture and do it in a smart way. My concern with this is the amount of money for consultants. I don't think that $100,000 is going to last a year. So I would look, especially starting off, and integrating all the departments, you know, as they're doing their plan. So I think kicking it off might be a little bit more expensive. So that's my concern. And even say, I don't know, plus 300,000 or 325, and then add the numbers up to that would be my preference. And I think it could be a mixture.
Councilperson Pratt?
Yeah, it's exciting that we're, all the work we've done, we're moving forward. But, and that, I had a similar question about the right-of-way fees. Like, when, say, Gresham charges this 10% fee, like, I, I just, I never understood from last time how that works. Like, does it get, that fee just get passed on to Gresham residents? Or does it get, like, wherever PGE is at, for example?
No, it's, it's by, it's by the franchise. So it is the, the service boundary of that jurisdiction.
Okay. Yeah, and I agree we need it. And then my personal, like, the Share the Pennies program, that would be my first option, just because that's something where people have, can opt out. So they have a choice there. My second option was be the building permit fees, just because the, people are making an investment in something, so it makes more sense. I really want to see more money towards this, but I also have a concern about, you know, people are so strapped right now, so. But between the building permit fees and the Share the Pennies, we don't cover that cost. So we kind of have to look at including some kind of franchise fee to make this work.
Council Brooks?
I'm going to mention one other thing too. When we went over the idea of the Climate Action Plan and the goals, we looked at mitigation and, what was the other one?
Adaptation.
Adaptation. But what I, what we didn't really pull out of it was efficiency. So I really think that as we move forward with these models, like, we have some things, we have the lights that we've already done. We have the in-pipe water that's coming onboard. As we look at the community savings that these investments the community is making, and the way that these new technologies work better and are more modern, and what it's bringing to the citizens and businesses that are here. Those are the things that I think offset the concerns with the half percent on those utilities. And for such a, like, a half percent, if we're very low, I don't know. It will be interesting to see if, how much would be passed along, because some of this stuff is the cost of doing business, and they, it sometimes wouldn't be. Or sometimes we might already be paying it if we're undervaluing.
Do you have a question?
I guess, yeah, that would be my real question is like, is Gresham really paying seven or six and a half percent more on their electric bill or whatever bill than we are, just because of this?
Yes.
Well, I do not know the pass-through. I, I don't, I don't know that line. I know with PGE, the three and a half percent is, there's a line that is the city of Tuolton. I don't know if it's called, you know, the, the franchise fee or the right-of-way fee. So it does show city of Tuolton on your current PGE bill. So I presume in Gresham, it, it shows 10%. What I don't know is if they, I presume they would pass that along, but I, I don't know that for sure. I think there was some discussion last, last council meeting when we talked about this, of asking them, like, how that gets, like, if it's a half percent increase, can they just fold it into the cost of doing business? I don't know how their modeling works, but.
Other questions? Councilor Sacco?
Thank you. I'd be interested to know, and I don't have to know this off the top of your head, but the building permit fees, how much they vary year by year? Or is it pretty stable? Because that would be a concern as far as just stability moving forward. And then also the Share the Pennies program. I don't know if there's any, any work that's been done out there to know how much that fluctuates too. I mean, I assume that once people, you know, opted or, like, it's probably pretty consistent. But I wonder if during, you know, harder economic times, that people look at that as something to, to change. I don't know. That'd be interesting.
Echo Northwest, that is a good question, and we could probably track that. I am sure we could track that. I know that they had done some work on the utility. The, Echo Northwest had done some, some work on the Share the Pennies. And they, Memphis, the, the share of customers who chose to opt out was about 13%. So that's why they included it, the 13% on here. But we were like, well, be more conservative, and what if we had a 50% opt-out?
Right. I just wonder if that was like at a point in time? Or is that an average over how many?
I don't know.
Councilwoman Hillier?
Thank you. I guess I can see the need for braided funding, obviously, just because the numbers don't add up. I personally would not advocate for increasing the dollar amount above the 250 for now, to get started. I think once we see where the program goes, I would, you know, be happy to entertain a different look at that. And that's my opinion on that. I wonder about I wonder about, realistically, if we were to just, for instance, look at just the electric, inbraid with the permitting and the pennies, which would clearly give you way more than you need potentially. Number one, I'd like to know, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't think to ask this before, how much would that be to an average household? I tried to kind of make the calculation, and so I'm, I'm with Councilor Sacco on that. And I wonder if because that would put the number way over, if we were to potentially halve that, or even make it a .3% instead of a .5%, I'd be interested to know those numbers, so that it would come out closer to that 250 with, with the braided style. So those are my thoughts.
It says .5% is 249.9.
Yeah, so the, if I understand correctly, instead of a half a percent, look at a quarter percent or .3%.
But, yeah, plus going on to Council Hillier's point, that's exactly what I was thinking, was when I did the math, .3% on franchise fees, 3% on surcharge, and 49 cents Share the Pennies gets you what you need.
So, I'm sorry, I was switching my papers. Could you say that again?
The, the .3% increase on franchise fees.
For electric, for.
Electric, natural gas, telecommunications, solid waste, 3% surcharge on building permits, and a 49 cent Share the Pennies program gets you to your goal, actually above it, a little bit. And this way, the impact, it still leaves us room if we need to move in the future. You know, given Councilor Sacco's very good point of how things change year over year. And the impact wouldn't be as big on the average consumer, average resident and business owner with a .3% franchise fee increase. Those folks who want to opt out on the pennies thing could. Would they have the option of doing 49 cents or 99 cents, or one of the other?
No, we'd ask you to set.
Yeah, so 49, you know, 49 cents, most people would probably go for it. But that's what, do what I'm saying, you know, basically, .3, 3% and 49 cents gets us to where we need for year one. And it's, in my mind, it minimizes the impact on our residents and businesses. It gets the Climate Action Fund funded, Climate Action Plan funded. But it's not a, you know, we're not collecting excessive amount of money. And it seems, you know, a fraction of what other folks are still doing in surrounding jurisdictions. Like, Council Pratt, you have your hand up.
My only concern about that is the building permit fees, because I think it was just, this is based on the 25 budget, and we've got Lamb and Autumn Sunrise. So it's going to be higher than future years, most likely. So we're going to exceed it for one year, and then we're going to be in the hole again. That doesn't seem like good planning.
The budget, you should be adjusting every year, anyway.
The budget for.
Then the next, in the following year's budget.
Then we're going to look at franchise fees again, because the building permit fees are going to be way down?
You could, yeah.
That's kind of, I mean, would it be?
We're supposed to be monitoring those, anyway. Every, every fiscal, every year, we're supposed to be looking. If we're falling behind in a fee, we shouldn't just be setting it in stone. If we need to raise it, we need to raise it.
Okay, I see.
I mean, these would have to be reviewed annually. Again, that's, I don't know if it's Council Sacco or Council Hillier. A year from now, you know, we might need more money than we thought, so we're going to have to adjust, anyway.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
Council Brooks.
Thanks for doing the math. I, I agree with it, and at the same time, I'm still concerned about starting it out. So I know that there is one-time funding that we could utilize for consultants. And I think that there should be some language in that item that could say, like, 100 to 200,000 or something like that, depending on if there was a need. Just so that people, so that it can start off. We've started off with a lot of delays that have cost us. And I want to start off in a way, now that we're actually doing it, that isn't going to cost this new person when they're trying to do this work. Because they're on some, you know, $100,000 for consultants goes pretty quick.
I do think that we'll want to set it up right from the very beginning, where we're tracking revenues and expenses, so that we can report back to you about how, what's coming in, and the participation rate, for instance, or like the, and then match up our expenses with our revenues for the program.
Council Brooks.
And then I'm going to also be excited about the outcome measures with efficiencies, how much money the city is saving, how much money we're saving, how efficient we are, as well as reducing these numbers that we have, and improving our mitigation. I was just, well, I'll tell you later. Thanks.
Councilor Sacco.
I'm curious, too, about our building permit fees, and how, how those compare to other cities, maybe other cities around us. My concern is, kind of where I'm going with this, is are we making it more expensive for people to build when housing is a crisis? And even, like, things like accessory dwelling units and things like that? How, you know, are we, and I know that, you know, 3% or 5% maybe isn't a huge increase, and maybe wouldn't deter people from doing things like that. But just interested, and I don't want to create more barriers for housing.
Councilor Reyes.
Thank you. Actually, I was thinking the same thing when I was looking at the permit and electric. I mean, the essentials that people use to, to live, right? Electric, gas, telecommunications, solid waste. Thinking more of the, I'm just, I'm sorry. I, I would prefer the Share the Pennies program to be explored. Here's why. I think that we have confidence in our community that they want this as well. I mean, this is, we are doing this because we feel very confident, right, that they want this? So. I, yes, I, I propose maybe, 99 cents doesn't seem like a lot to me to, you know, maybe like a dollar 50 or something? I, I, I mean, are these ratios based on what? Someone has made a study and say, well, 87% of participants at 99 cents, 13% of that will opt out. Is that, is that where you're getting that study? Or, I'm just wondering if, if that's just common. That was from the study that came back, that 13%, if we ask them for 99 cents, would, 87 participant rate, 13% opt out, meaning, is that something that's standard out there, or?
No. So the Memphis program, the Share the Pennies, is a utility roundup. So like, if your bill is $18.36, it would round up to $19. And that, that amount of money would, would go to the program. Our system doesn't allow for that roundup. And so the roundup wouldn't be more than a dollar. So, so that's how we picked, like, 49 cents and, and 99 cents, because that, like, it's, it's a roundup, right? So I don't, I'm probably not describing it very well, but then.
No, I understand what you're saying, yeah. I, I see it in my head. I, I'm thinking if, if, because we can't do the roundup, maybe just ask for a dollar 50. Or in addition to, like, say, this $19.50, let's just ask them for a dollar 50, that'll be $21, or something like that. Is that, is that not something that we can do? Or is it, does it have to be this, this ratio that we have here? This formula?
I don't know about asking, if like, it's a, like, we would, we need a doll, we need a dollar amount to put in.
Thank you.
On what Council Ray is saying, I mean, I really like this program, because people can opt out. It gives people an option. And if we went to a dollar 50, that's over $101,000 based on these numbers. So it would increase it a lot, but it's something that people have a choice on. So, I mean, to me, it's, I think that's the best way to fund. But you could do a dollar 50 as opposed to.
Oh, absolutely. We can plug in whatever amount.
That was my question. Can we?
We can plug in whatever amount.
So that would get us over $100,000. So maybe, you know, you could look at reducing the other ones that aren't optional.
I would like to stick with one. That was just kind of my idea, so that way we keep.
But it'd be nice to stick with two.
Or two, something that kind of, that's not as much of like all over the place, where we're losing track of what, but I understand the opt-out. Like, it's in the bill, and then someone decides to, like, I decide to remove the $2, for instance, right?
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much for providing this information to the public. I, I think that this is just a Trojan horse. I really do. I think that if we're going to allow people to have a choice on Climate Action Plan, I, I will support the Share the Pennies. And let's see what revenue that generates this year. Bank that money and see what it does next year. If there's love for it and passion for it, and people believe in this stuff, then this program should soar right here, and it, and it would bank the money. We don't have to increase the taxes on anything else, because when we look at our property taxes, it is layered with tax over tax, 10 cents more, 5 cents. I'm not being very specific on those numbers, but it is like that. Soon enough, in a year from now, we, we will all forget, and the people will forget that they've already increased their utility costs here and there in years past. Now this is just another layer. If, if this is a program that people want to get behind, let's do the Share the Pennies. Let's see what the results are. Let's bank this money, and then next year, let's do it again. And now we'll have two years of data of, of money being stored. And if people are for it, then we can consider doing other, other tax increases. This is just not the time. I mean, we do believe in the Climate Action Plan, but I think there is things that we can do here locally right now with our own team, where they happen to generate and increase permanent fees that are not going to go away. As soon as this person is in place, it is a Trojan horse. This person will begin to cost more, not intentionally, it's just, we see these programs in other organizations, and they blow up. They just blow up. So I would be for Share the Pennies, because this, because this gives our constituents the choice. If they want to spend the money around this, then put your money with Mouse Hat and, and do it. But I would not be for any of, anything else when it comes to increases in any kind of utility, especially with rising costs everywhere right now.
So Sherilyn, follow up on Council Gonzalez's point. Say, council voted, say, let's just do the Share the Pennies program, and we pick $2, because that gets you to $260,000. If you have 13% opt-out, if you could do $2, it's, it's, it's $260,000. So the question I have is, in terms of budgeting, that's fairly risky for the city to hire someone and stand up this program anticipating, hopefully, if it occurs, you collect that fund. So this isn't the super most reliable thing. This would have to be, you know, Council Gonzalez has a great point. If you'll say, hey, if you really want this, you'll pay for it. But it's, somehow, it's got to be braided, because if we do have, are overly optimistic how many people would opt out, and we really don't get, you know, it might be lower than 50% participation, there's no way we could budget for this position, because you have to have guaranteed funds, either from permit fees or franchise fees, correct?
I think we would need to make some kind of assumption about how much money this program would bring in. And I think the higher, I'm not an economist, but I think the higher you raise the fee, the more people are going to opt out. And so there's some calculation in there. I hear what you're saying. I, I do think that having even a, a smaller building permit fee increase ties it to, it has such a strong nexus to the, the emissions and the work. It, it, it seems like a, like a valuable ad that, that makes sense to connect, and, and along with the Share the Pennies program.
So, a sec, because I want to guide this along, because we can talk about this all night. I don't feel like it. We've got to give Sherilyn direction on which way we want to go on this. So just want to focus, people to focus in on what's the direction we need to give tonight on this. And that's just throwing it out there that, you know, I'd like to give Sherilyn, you know, what three programs, what things we would like staff to look at, what particular rates, what kind of outreach needs to be done? Because as was mentioned at the Budget Committee meeting, this is already programmed into our budget. There's an assumption this money's going to be there. So if council does not come up with this, this position is not going to occur. Council Brooks.
I'm still in favor of the three-pronged approach. There's more stability for building fee permits. We are lower than more of our neighbors. So those budgets are built in, in regional ways for building companies. They don't look at things like, like this tiny way when you're looking at development projects. And, and I also think that if it was all the pennies, that it would be disproportionate to individuals. Whereas when you look at those other two options, in addition, there's more commercial buy-in, and commercial buildings are the biggest off-gassers in our region. And then finally, we're going to learn through this and offset through mitigation, so we can look at what is working when we have all those three options the best, and, and how it ties into the solutions that we come up with. And then finally, as far as a, a program blowing up, I think that being in Sherilyn's department, this person's not going to be running wild, doing all crazy things. This is something that this one person coordinates with all of our very, very talented directors across the organization. I'm very proud of the city and all the work that, that our directors do and how we do that work. So I don't see us, even the fact that we are so low already, I just don't see this city as being a spend-thrift city that we're going to all of a sudden change our culture on this one item. Thank you.
Councilor Sacco.
For me, it's impossible to make a decision without knowing the right-of-way cost per household. And so I have a really hard time kind of saying what direction to go until we have that information.
So what, so you're asking, before we decide on, say, I'm just going to pull a number out of the sky. You know, if we say, oh, let's look, evaluate the .3% increase on franchise fees, you want to know what that actual impact is per household and per business? Not per business, on average.
On average per business, yeah.
One option, so I, I do have some follow-up questions. What's the, the one that you raised, Councilor Sacco? There's also the, let's see, is the building, are the building permit fees volatile? Look at, we could look at the past four or five years. Interested in building fees, how we're comparing. I can also find that past information. So two years ago, we came forward with a build and complete overhaul of the building fee, and looked at what other cities did, so we can go back and, and get that information. Yeah, so we can bring back that information, maybe for the third Budget Committee meeting, or, or the, a meeting in June? You can make a decision for.
You need a, a date certain on the decision, that's correct?
Yeah.
Because it's in the budget package. If we can't get a majority to decide on the braided plan, then it won't be in the budget and be eliminated. Go ahead.
This is just a suggestion, but if we did the Share the Pennies program at a dollar, and the building permit fees, we could have a pretty low increase on electric to make it work.
On the finance.
What?
On the what charge?
On the right-of-way fee. We can make that really as low as possible to make it work for the first year.
So the, what are you suggesting for the Share the Pennies?
The 99 cents. And I'm just assuming, I'm, I'm guessing it'll come in fairly high if you keep it low like that, like probably 13, 15%. And then if we did the, I'm sorry, and then the building permit fees, you've got almost 70,000 there coming in, estimate, all right? That's pretty set for next year. 70,000 there coming in, estimate, all right, that's pretty set for next year. And then just make that, make it work with the right-of-way fees being whatever minimum amounts needed. It's gonna be less than 3% to make it work. And then like, like you, the mayor said, like, next year, we'll have to look, if the building permit fees are gonna be down, we're gonna have to look at that fee to adjust.
Um, my comments are, I would like to share, do the share of the pennies first. I, I feel like it gives people also the opportunity to choose. We've done this with the utilities where we don't give people opportunities. We can just say it's $5 fees and that's it. So I think with this, it would be appreciative to have that option, but not be able to, I mean, I, I'm pretty certain people will, will not opt out if we, and I would say on the 99 cents or even more, I don't even think people will be surprised that it's a $2 or $1.50. I mean, that's just, I see people being on board with this because they do care. I would rather do that more than the, I definitely don't want the right-of-way franchise fees. I just feel like that's, it, those things are so essential for people to survive and live that I feel like, that's like my least favorite. That's, I, I wouldn't mind the permit, but then again, we want people to feel incentivized to build here and all that. But if I get a choice, I will start with the pennies, building permits. I would definitely not want to do the right-of-way until I know that it's not affecting our community to need gas to cook and freezer, have electric for their, for their food and things like that.
So it sounds like you're, like as Counselor Sacco has said. You know, if we're better educated on the average franchise fees that the average household or businesses paying in the city, then we can better gauge what the impact is of a 0.25 or a 0.3, a 0.5 or a 0. And that would influence your decision on franchise fees and the, the braiding, if you will.
Correct. Thank you.
Does that sound right to everyone?
You focused on electric. What about like solid waste? That is a much less, I, it, it, I, I just wonder the.
Isn't it kind of a higher fee for people that have more people in their household though?
Is it?
Yeah, you pay, pay a higher rate for more car, it spells bigger garbage sales.
Oh.
Yeah. Counsel Brooks.
I'm gonna speak, I, I appreciate Counselor Reyes's thoughts. I think that Valerie's proposition kind of tackles that with the dollar. I think the consultants did the dollar in a place that would work and so that would be a bigger bite of the apple. But then the two other fees to have stability that we talked about, just like the mayor brought and then maybe just bring, as we bring the facts, just have a couple options for us to pick from, knowing where we're going with the amount in the budget and knowing where we're going with the flexibility for one-time monies, just to shore us up. That's my, now we can just move on.
And back to Counselor Reyes's point, like, is there anywhere we could reach out to find out where that flexion point is with that pennies thing? Like, like is it a $1.50, is it two where people start opting out more because they start saying it's too much? You know, like a dollar, $1.50 in my mind doesn't sound like much. When you get to two or more, I'm kind of like eh, you know? So I don't know what it is, you know, if there's a way to find that out where that people start really noticing and opting out.
I don't know other than to look back at the program that's in place and it's a little bit of a different program and.
Yeah.
They had a fairly low opt-out rate, but it is like a roundup program, so it wasn't a set fee.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna say, I don't know if the true story about JCPenney or not, but 0.99 is a dollar. So the whole, everything in, you know, 2.99 is $3.
Yeah, it looks different, yeah.
It looks different, it looks cheaper, but 99 cents is still a dollar. So for the extra penny, it's not worth wringing your hands about.
Here's another option, I'm not sure that I, like, do I dare? So the ongoing costs that are, that are in here right now is basically 150,000 for the, the, the position and the related expenses and then 100,000 in one-time dollars. So if you could get, I mean, the one-time dollars are easier to come by in the budget because the, like, it's, it's just easier to fund things with the leftover, the leftover dollars. So we were suggesting that the, there would be at least $100,000 of, of one-time expenses every year, which kind of makes it an ongoing expense. But if you broke this up into 150,000 and 100,000 and you shoot to fund the ongoing expenses, so the 150,000 with new ongoing revenues and then we would have to find the one-time dollars for consultants, like every year, that, so all you would have to fund is basically 150,000, but I, I don't think that that's very wise. I think you should fully fund the program if you're gonna fund the program, but.
It's not, it's not worth all the extra for, for a fraction of a percentage.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you're gonna show the commitment or you're not, in my book?
I just also like to go back to the, the, the off-gassing to start with, you know? And we do these pennies program, if you lean the most into that, you have the most going for consumers and it's not a grassroots problem and it's not a grassroots solution. It's a, it's a, a larger conversation than that and that's part of the reason why it's supported by the community.
Businesses pay the fees too, it's not just residential. This is not just a residential bill.
I know.
It'd be a.
I understand that, but I also understand investors that are doing, building new buildings is a different matrix than somebody having an ongoing building.
Okay.
Fee. And that is where those types of things, same with power fees, it ties directly. So big users of power would pay more, so like those, you know, battery generating places and stuff like that. Yeah.
We still have time, so the, let, let us get the, the information and bring it back. I, I don't know if we can have it back for the, the second May meeting, the next meeting, but we can definitely have it back for the first meeting of June. And, you know, that's before July 1st and you still will have the opportunity to adopt the budget, the second meeting of June. So that, that gives us, yeah, that will give you more information. We can refine these numbers and the questions that you've asked.
So you have what you need?
I think so.
Okay.
Got some questions.
Counsel Hillier.
Would it also be worthwhile to include what these efficiency potentials are so that we understand? Like if I understand Counselor Brooks, like I think I have, what's being indicated is there will be efficiencies and so to me, that means savings at some point. So what are in, in other communities, what are they seeing as results? Do we already know that information? Because that would be kind of, or I'm happy to go look that up on my own if somebody wanted to just tell me how to look that up. I, I'm happy to look it up, but that would help me understand better, to make sure there's a sustainability of this program.
I get that. The, the challenge with that is that our Climate Action Plan is not prioritized right now. So the actions, like the, we would have to take actions and understand the efficiencies and the savings that come back. So, and that is the work of the, the staff person to come. I don't have somebody that can do that work.
So because it's unique to us, we couldn't just go see what an average other city or is saving, is I think what you're saying. Yeah, and that's fair, if that's the answer. Mel, thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right, we've got a list of questions.
Yep.
We'll come back to you with some information and thank you for all your feedback and input.
Counsel Brooks.
Could we add the existing savings that we have, like for instance, on the field lights, on what we expect to be saving through the inflow water pipe? Like we have those numbers already to show that this is something that we would be building on.
I just, I'm thinking of staff capacity and I'm not sure I can get that back to you in this timeframe. But I, maybe that, I can, we can brainstorm that and see what we can bring back.
Just if we have it.
Okay. All right.
I guess we moved on to the next step in the process.
All right. Uh, so that, that concludes General Business. Uh, that moves us to, we had no items removed from the agenda, to the agenda. We had no items removed from the consent agenda tonight. That brings us to Council Communications, since we didn't have a work session, we'll go ahead and do that now. We'll give Sherlin a break and get her a voice back and we'll go ahead and start with Counselor Sacco. But we will, we will get to you.
Thank you. Um, so recently I had the Willamette River Water Coalition meeting. We reviewed the Willamette reallocation, the WIF Commission updates. We also reviewed the water drought report as we do every meeting, which is measuring near average. We also reviewed the financial statements for the current fiscal year and adopted work plan and budget for next fiscal year. On May 8th, I attended the C4 meeting in Counselor Pratt's absence, which is very interesting. I love the opportunity to go. And there were quite a few great presentations, the Clackamas County Walk and Bike Plan, Transportation, Transportation Safety Presentation, and it was offered up to come give presentations for local, for local organizations. So if anybody's interested, let me know. And then also reviewed the Sunrise Community Vision Project Update, which was really interesting because it was the first time I really got to hear about that. So that's it, thank you.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. I didn't have any formal meetings, but wanted to share that LEAP did their mental health rally this morning from 8:00 AM till about 8:50 AM in front of Twelton High School this morning. We were out with signs and waving. And I do want to share that I do think people who drive through there are unaware of what an actual 35 mile an hour speed is and what an actual 20 mile an hour speed is. So we are gonna add on our signs going in the future, the speed limit on the back of the sign and turn it around is one idea that the students had. So we were a little shocked at that, so.
Counsel Reyes.
Uh, no formal official meeting in the last couple of weeks, but I did attend the Latino Business Network and it was a really good meeting. We, CIT presented on the Cora and we had some people that were really interested in being part of just speaking and looking at, at things and, and having a voice there. So it was, it was a really, it was interesting and I really want to thank CIT and the city for putting that together. Thank you.
Sherlin. Got you by surprise, didn't I? Counsel Gonzalez is ready to go, but.
All right. I've got a few things. So speaking of Cora and the downtown revitalization, we're excited for our first Community Advisory Committee meeting, which is coming up on Wednesday. We've been looking at what opportunities there are for the community to engage and there's gonna be, there are gonna be a series of focus groups, a community survey, a community identity workshop. So speaking of the focus group, so we're scheduled for one day, so Tuesday, May 27. There are gonna be six focus groups with two to three people in each, 50-minute sessions. They will involve property owners, perhaps residents, questions about the downtown, character, positives, challenges. We would like to involve the City Council in those focus groups. So one member per focus group, so that gives us, well, hopefully we can, like, there'll be, there's seven of you, but if all seven of you, so there may be a focus group that has two City Council members. But the staff will be reaching out to see if, with the opportunities for that and I hope that you're able to engage in that. So yes, that's one thing. We are developing a, we've, I've been in a series of meetings, we're developing a process for the evaluation of the concept for grade separation of Twelton Sherwood Road, Boone's Ferry and the, and the railroad. We're putting together a project charter and looking at evaluating the concept, right? So it, it's the first of probably many, many, many phases, but I'm excited to get started on that evaluation of the concept. Planback Gardens got its final certificate of occupation. I know that, that that doesn't maybe mean a lot to you guys, but the, it was a really big deal and it's been a lot of staff work and we allowed the grand opening and move-in and whittled all the things down and so we had a virtual high-five with our team because that was a really big deal. We had Bulky Waste Day and Yard Debris Day on May 3rd. For Bulky Waste Day, there were 266 vehicles, 40.13 tons of waste recycling. Yard Debris Day collected 40, 14 yards of material. Congresswoman Salinas did a ride-along with our police department today. We took her around and had a, had a, by all accounts, a, a very good conversation with her and got her out, you know, on, on the ground, including driving her past the, our federal earmark project at 65th and Borland. This Saturday is the River Park Community Fair, so from 1:00 to 3:00 at Jergens Park, for those of you that are interested in going. So last week was Public Service Appreciation Week and we did a number of things. We hosted a lunch for our employees on Tuesday, then we had an all-employee meeting on Wednesday and had a, a really good time there. And then Thursday, we had a coffee truck where folks could get coffee and just helped our employees feel appreciated, I hope. This week is Police Week, so hug, hug your police officer. And, you know, it's a tough job and they deserve so much respect and we have a wonderful police force and very proud of, of them. Next week is National Public Works Week and with that comes activities, but we're trying a new thing this year, Big Truck Day on the 21st, which I think is Wednesday, I think that's Wednesday, from 10:00 to noon at Community Park or at TCS, maybe it's out here. Anyway, the, it's gonna be exciting, there's gonna be all of our big trucks, plus TVFNR will have a, have some of their stuff. Next Tuesday, Hazelbrook Middle School is having a Hazelbrook Cares volunteering event. So they're basically taking their entire, I don't know, 600 kids and they're spending the entire morning volunteering. Jackie Conan, our volunteer coordinator, and practically our entire team of parks and are hosting, you know, a, a bunch of middle school kids and our exec team is gonna be helping out. We're gonna be crew leaders on some of the, on some of the things, so that's gonna be exciting. And then Memorial Day, of course, is before our next council meeting and the Vets Plaza ribbon cutting at 9:30 on the 26th, so that's what I got.
Thanks. Counselor Gonzalez.
That's tough to follow all of that. I, I have not had very much activity.
I, I have not had very much activity, but I did attend the ECIO, um, meeting and that was nice. Uh, Counselor Hillier, you won, there was only like seven people who showed up, so, eight, yes, there's eight. Um, so that was great to speak in front of the group, feel the couple small questions, it was all good. Uh, this Thursday, this Friday and Saturday, I'll be spending the day and night with our firefighter team, so that should be a lot of fun, report back on next meeting, so, thank you.
Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, attended the 2025 Local Government Spring Conference and, uh, on May 1st and 2nd, there was a lot of different things I attended. Council President Pratt was also there. There's one, um, person that spoke for the keynote for the luncheon for the first day was Lou Raja and, um, he's a speaker, author and coach and he was very good at, um, encouraging leaders to be expansive, especially policy leaders expansive and courageous in their work. And I wish I could bottle that and share it with the whole council because especially with our conversation as we're going forward today. There was also a really good talk from the tribal chair, Brenda Mead, who, um, encouraged local governments to work with their tribes, if there's tribes in their area, and talked a lot about her, um, leadership role with the Coquel tribe. And then, um, there was another gentleman there, uh, his name's Nate Wildfire and he's the executive director for, um, the Missing Middle. Yeah. And I forget the rest of the name of his organization, but he gave a lot more outcomes than a lot of people that generally speak about this topic of housing, which was encouraging. He's realistic and very innovative and had a lot of resources, um, uh, for tailored conversations around, um, housing and also just, um, technology. Like one of the things was they worked with a whole county to get the, um, building codes, um, organized in the computers, so they don't have to look it up at the desk. And it, the efficiencies that they built in is really good, so they could build, go ahead and build faster. On the, I also went on doing buggies. On the, um, let's see, what was the other one? On the 8th, I was at the ribbon cu- cutting ceremony for Salt and Straw with, um, the mayor who did a great job speaking and Susan, who we just saw tonight, also did a beautiful job introducing, um, the new business owner. And then Friday, um, I went to the East Fork Reconnection Project, which I got invited to from, um, uh, a Whatlands group that has been in touch with me since I've been on the Water Consortium, that was Friday, May 9th, and who happens to be out there but our former Parks Director, Ross. So I said, um, hello and was asking him if he's going to come to the opening, so he said he would hope so, um, for, for the, um, Memorial Day. And then just Happy Mother's Day to everybody. This time of the year, um, May 19th is last day for the lights out for the birds, so that's a really good thing to remember that we're in high, um, migration season and try to keep your lights out at night. And then the other thing was, um, there's also a lot of baby animals this time of the year and there's a lot of things you can do to protect, it's easy to find online, so, um, Happy Mother's Day to the human moms too. Let's, and I will be gone, um, this coming, uh, we- weekend through the week, so I won't, I will try to come virtually, but I might have to catch it, the budget meeting online, so.
Counselor President Pratt.
Yeah, I also went to the League of Oregon Cities Convention, it was, and then, um, Counselor Brooks had mentioned the lunch speaker, Lou, he was very inspiring, I mean, we talked about it that night and one of the things he said that our role on council is to be the chief belonging officer and I just love that statement to think of our role in that way, I thought it was really awesome. Also, another speaker talked about focusing, um, I, maybe it was him, but I wrote it down, but not to look at immediate fixes, but think long-range like tenure fixes and where are we going down the road? I thought that was great. There was, um, a presenter on the roles, making sure we stay in our lane, that we only hire the city manager. And our roles policy, so that was a good reminder. Patty went over the League of City priorities in more detail, which was really good and interesting, I thought. And I got to go on a Coast Guard tour and see their helicopters, which is super, and it's kind of like the TVFNR thing, you come out of there going, wow, these people are so dedicated and amazing. And the last thing that was really cool, at the end, they talked about, um, Coos Bay is in the process of getting funding to become a deep-water port. It's a huge thing for their economy. They will, they'll be able to, um, bring in freighter ships with up to 13,000 things on it and they'll be one of the main ports on the West Coast, it's really needed. They've had, um, support from both the Biden and Trump administration. They, um, bought the rail line to Portland several years ago because it was in total disrepair, so they basically got it for a really good price. And so that funding would have to pay for that too, but it would, it would be a main port on the West Coast and it, it'd be great for their economy. Of course, the thing they're struggling with is that will bring 8,000 jobs, which is great, but then we need housing for 8,000 jobs and families, so that's their, the piece they're working on now, but it was very interesting.
All right. Um. Yes.
I hand out those bags too. That's the, when we were, um, got the presentation from our new, um, person in, uh, development, Sid, um, and I mentioned that program that's run through, um, the other university? Oregon State, sorry Cindy. This is the, this is part of that, there's free resources and there's different centers in every county and so they were tabling there, so it was kind of funny because since I can't remember the name of them, which I still can't, um, I hand out the bag so you guys can, and it's, it's really interesting information and easy to access.
Thanks. Met with Bre Armitage of Senator Wyden's staff for coffee at the beginning of the month to find out what's going on in DC and, uh, what's the read and, um, how the budget process is going. You also want to know, you know, what's going on in the city and how the Senator's office can help with any of our initiatives, so always appreciate Bre taking the time out to meet with me. Uh, May 3rd, couldn't make the Bulk Waste Dump Off Day because I was at the Neighbor's Nursery and Communities Plant Handout, uh, that was held at the Tuolton Food Pantry. Uh, we had 25 gardeners come and wipe us out of everything we had, that's the first time in ever history of NNC that we gave out everything, so we're looking forward to lots of tomatoes, peppers, basil, uh, cucumbers, squash, all kinds of stuff coming back. Uh, we were able to help out, uh, Larry McClure represented the Grange, uh, sad to find out the Grange doesn't have seeds any longer because, uh, Buy Mart will not supply them, but NNC, we have a boatload of seeds, so Larry, uh, you know, was the, uh, resident advisor on folks on what seeds to plant, when, where, and all that good stuff, so appreciate Larry taking time to be there. Uh, Salt and Straw ribbon cutting was fantastic, it was mobbed, they're going to do bang-up business there. Uh, this is their seventh, uh, Oregon location, but over 40 locations across the US and, uh, it's family-owned, she's, her and her husband still own all of them. On Friday, the 9th, I testified in Salem, did our, my two-minute, uh, dog and pony for, uh, the $2 million that, remember that's the shade structure and the Veterans Plaza and the seismic valves. I feel lucky, only had to wait an hour and a half, there was 300 people registered, um, to testify, they were, obviously we're not going to get to all of them by 5:00. They're going to hold another session on the 26th, but those are for folks who, um, have to testify remotely because they're on the far reaches of the, the state. Very interesting combination of projects, everything from, um, the city of Elgin looking for $60,000 for a, a street sweeper and his pitch was fantastic that you can give me the $60,000 now or I'll be back in five years looking for $5 million because my sewer system will be full of stuff. So I was like, that's pretty good. Uh, and right next to him was, uh, the mayor of Portland pitching a $230 million project versus Elgin's 60,000. I had the, uh, luck of being called up with TriMet Director Sam Sue and our $2 million ask was minuscule compared to his $30 million ask for a TriMet. Uh, so, uh, there are $2 billion worth of requests and 500 million of money to give out and a majority of that are, has already been allocated, so it's kind of like when folks come to us for our grant program. Today was the Washington County Corning Committee, uh, myself and Mayor Lube were reappointed to R1 Act for another year or two. Uh, we discussed, I know Counselor Pratt will love this one, we discussed the regional flexible funding, step two participation, so basically what this was, this, uh, there was some money left over from the federal government for Metro to allocate. They went through this whole process, talking to the three counties to find out what projects should be funded. Metro asked for and got lots of public comment and in the opinion of the Washington County Corning Committee, ignored it and did what they wanted to do. And I heard Clackamas County felt the same way, uh, so Metro Counselor, um, Rosenthal was in the meeting, uh, and is to follow up on why staff at Metro basically disregarded two counties said, because most of the money obviously is going to go to Portland. Um, the next follow-up to that, speaking of transportation, Washington County, uh, had, they call it the Washington County Resilient Transportation Funding Program. Basically it's, we don't have money to fund Mistip, so how are we going to fund the transportation funds in Washington County? Uh, they asked for ideas of what cities were doing, so of course I talked about Tuolton moving forward, what a success that was, so there's questions about how the bond worked and, you know, did people vote for it? And we're like, yeah, we just didn't decide to do it. And, um, the idea that we had a list of projects that we could float out there before we would put out for bond, that people could see how effective it was going to be, that everybody would have a project in their area and that, that the city stood behind, that this would get done on time, on budget. Uh, it sounds like they might be hiring a, uh, some consultants to figure out what kind of funding sources Washington County can get to fund the transportation projects that there just won't be money in Mistip for going forward in the future. Uh, then we had a legislative update, um, being really geeky and wonky, there's a Senate Bill 974A, uh, which sought to four cities, whether they're, they'll call it a 90-day shot clock? That once you got an application from a developer, the city had 90 days to approve it, uh, and get it through the system. It's been through all kinds of gyrations and amendments, uh, League of Oregon Cities has been on this as well as other cities. Latest I heard is the 90 days has been pushed to 120, but the League of our city, Oregon City, League of Oregon Cities is still pushing on that. The ability to file a lawsuit has been withdrawn, there was, uh, an attempt that if you, um, did not meet the 90 days, developer could sue the city and we would have to pay fees for a developer. But there's still some points of, uh, discussion that I guess there was supposed to be an amendment dropped today, but it didn't at the hearing, uh, that still had, we still have some concerns with that could impact development here in the city, so, um, I'm keeping in touch with that. Thorn Run, I emailed today and they hadn't answered right back, so, and, um, if you hear about it, uh, they're looking for, uh, comments from cities, I'm going to wait to see what the latest amendment is before, we already sent a letter in the very beginning, uh, but it's hard to send another letter to reinforce, and, um, you know, the impacts, give the stories of what could happen to the city if that development clock is that fast, given our level of staffing and, uh, that's pretty aggressive, 90 days to get a development application through. Uh, and finally, we talked about the ODOT funding, you know, the one-point, DOT was a 1.3 billion trip plan, uh, and ODOT's proposal, uh, focusing, focusing on, you know, upping the payroll tax and all the different things, uh, that could be possible. There are no hearings set yet, so we're all, you know, on pins and needles. The Republican Party came back with an alternative plan, uh, that with no tax increases and basically gutted a whole bunch of programs, uh, starting with transit, you know, a couple hundred million dollars from there, staff cuts at ODOT and the like, so there's a lot of discussions that are going to happen between now and the end of the session, so TBD on that. And then, uh, today finally was, I attended the Aging Task Force. Discussion there was Ride Connection, you know, remember Ride, the representative was here, the healthcare provider, uh, was here talking about the, uh, Ride Connection problem with supplying rides for folks with dialysis, uh, so Ride Connection is out asking people to submit comments in terms of trip, asking, you know, that the amount of money allocated to STIF be increased under the transportation package, now we fall under the payroll tax, they're talking about increasing the payroll tax, so Ride Connection certainly can use those funds to get, uh, you know, people rights here in town. And then they were talking about, um, the article that was in the last or this current issue of Tuolton Life about, you know, is Tuolton an aging-friendly city? Some of the comments that came back had to do with sidewalks and tree streets and treats, uh, street trees. So I had to get the pitch about how we're looking at that actual issue because a lot of the folks on the Aging Task Force and some of the comments they got was, that we already knew was about sidewalks and sidewalk maintenance and some of the hazards, I let them know that we had done a survey, if you see some paint on your sidewalk, that's not a good thing and depending on the color, it's really not a good thing, uh, but that we are looking at, we're going to get to this and we'll have a discussion when we get to it, you know, involve those folks, uh, because what they're looking for is just a safe, even if they realize that, you know, we probably can't fix all the sidewalks, you know, quickly, but what they would like to know is what sidewalks are safe that they could walk on, uh, going in the future as we're working on them and giving them, you know, guidance on maybe maps or something eventually, uh, these are the ones we recommend you walk on and these, you know, don't walk on these yet till we get to them. No, no, yeah, the new map guy, yeah, he just got hired. All right, and that's all I got, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion second for adjournment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Good evening and have a good night.